We gathered today as a community to focus on the children and their needs and come together to make decisions that are right for them. And we hope that today we can all come together and focus on what's really true and right and just for them and make decisions that are not for us and what people need, but what's really best for them and that we put our pride aside and risk it for the children. Has much of that, but yeah. I think it's great. So, thank you. But the mission we do in our end of lazy theme is to be stand for the pledge. To stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Future leader. Hey, those of you who do not know me, I'm Christine Lane Waters. I am a retired teacher from East Meadow. I see quite a few faces that I recognize here. And I am now the incoming retirement with the New York State Education Chair for the NAACP. And first, please, open your seat. It's a volunteer organization and there are forty-seven branches in New York State alone. Eleven of them are here on Long Island. The, I'll introduce you in a moment to are the president of the Hempstead Branch, which is in the jurisdiction of, he's not a many knows, so she'll let you know who that is. But we have, we know that we have one nation and we all have one dream for our families. Our visions, our vision is that we envision an inclusive community rooted in liberation where all persons can exercise their civil and human rights without discrimination. So, our mission though is to achieve equity for liberal rights, social inclusion by advancing policies and practices that expand human and civil rights, eliminating discrimination and accelerate the well-being, education, and economic security of all people. And freedom of knowledge is freedom, so it's very fitting for me to be able to be here. We are a nonpartisan organization and we aim to be able to meet the needs of our students, advocating fully for full funding of the ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act, and fixing the foundation formula here in New York State. We are looking to be able to have access to education, fair discipline, excellent schools, and challenging curriculum in the world that should be lived. We are a nonpartisan organization and I just want to remind our audience and hope to provide ample time for all our candidates to address the current educational issues of East Meadow Public Schools and the things that the residents deem most important in their concerns. I want to remind you to be good listeners. I hate to have to do this, this is really, it was the rule in my classroom, it's the rule everywhere I go, but we, and we have to say this one voice at a time and that while we're listening, that we are respectful, that we are civil to one another, and those things are not mutually exclusive. We reserve the right to send a warning, to put people who are on line of duty. Thank you. But there was a lasting legacy of Brown versus Boyd Organization because most people thought that it only was applied to the South. That ruling of separate community of people had consequences, had unintended consequences where teachers lost their jobs. Many of them moved north or they left teaching altogether. In the north, they formed, there was a formation of neighborhoods and integration of schools created a lot of unrest. But segregation in the north was in housing, movie theaters, racially, people of color had siblings in the county, lunch counters, restaurants, job stores, gas stations, businesses, religious institutions, buses, trains, waiting rooms, jobs, hospitals. We have Henry Latt who was in a segregated hospital when she was being treated and therefore she never made it through having cervical cancer, but again, that's another story. Asylums, there were separate asylums for children to be in prisons and we are not sports. We had the American Negro League that was happening and they were not able to play together. So, after that, they made a push for being able to have integration in schools. So, here, again, in the north, they had something called de facto segregation, it meaning that it was an unspoken rule, the creation of Sunday exams where if you were a person of color, you could not go into certain neighborhoods and be there after Sunday. If you were, then you had indoors and you may not have made it home. So, we know that most recently occurred about the grid line, that still goes on, and the disparity in funding of facilities, teachers, and hiring. So, from that act, we actually got other laws. We got public law for special education, we got the IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities, we got the Every Student Succeeds Act, we got the New York State Dignity for All Students Act, NICE policy, DEI, culturally responsive framework, all has had its roots in separate being not equal. And here is a little girl who was born the same year as that ruling, Ruby Bridges, who was, when she was six years old, had to be escorted to school with protection. And again, we were hoping that that would be able to happen, but there's a whole timeline of things that were happening that went from the fifties through the seventies to now. Again, the Vocational Rehabilitation Act of nineteen seventy-three, the section five oh four that so many people use for special education for when they have, they have special needs or health issues, that all came from being able to have that ruling of Brown versus Boyd Education. At first, the law was used to provide physical access to buildings and to those individuals who only had mobility issues. So, all the way up to two thousand and five, where they had a requirement for highly qualified special education teachers, that that was something that came directly from. So, we actually have the, sorry, sorry. How many of you have been to a special education meeting on behalf of other people? That whole thing about free and public education, a least of the true environment, individual education program, or IEP's, nondiscriminatory assessments and evaluations, parent involvement in decision-making, due process and procedural safeguards, and zero reject, all of that stems from and is based on that ruling of Brown versus Boyd Education being inherently, if you're separate. So, we are looking tonight to give and have a conversation because of the fact that in the two thousands, that more than sixty-six percent of the children with disabilities were in general education classrooms. And today, we actually have ninety percent or more of their school day. We actually have four hundred and forty-one thousand infants and toddlers with disabilities and their families who now have the right to services. So, we're about to have our forum and we want, and to remind everyone and to be good listeners, that we're doing one voice at a time and we reserve the right to send one warning, to ask you not to have, and that you can hear in my cell phone, to please turn off the cell phone. My husband will follow me as we go. And if you interrupt, we reserve the right to ask you to remove yourself and three strikes you're out. This is actually the second warning that I'm giving here. So, and I'm not sure that anyone needs that, but I think it needs to be said anyway. So, I want to introduce our moderator, both, sorry, to introduce you to our Hempstead President, is Barbara Powell.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming. Once again, my name is Barbara Powell. I am the President of the Hempstead Branch of the NAACP, which proudly serves Hempstead, East Meadow, Uniondale, Baldwin, South Hempstead, Floral Park, Garden City, Garden City Park, Elmont, and Lettstown. Welcome to the School Board Candidates Forum. We're delighted, of course, to have you here tonight. And this forum provides a valuable opportunity to our community to hear directly from the candidates who are seeking to serve on the East Meadow School District, I'm sorry, the School, the East Meadow School Board. The School Board plays a critical role in shaping the educational experience for our students, setting policies, and ensuring that all our schools are well-matched and effectively serving the needs of the community. The decisions made by the School Board impact not only our students, teachers, and families, making it essential that we elect representatives for our community knowledgeable and responsible, responsive to our community's needs. Tonight, our candidates will share their visions, answer questions, and engage in discussions that will help us understand their positions on key issues. This is your chance to get to know the individuals who are vying for your vote and to make an informed decision in this upcoming election. We encourage you to listen carefully, think critically, and feel free to ask questions. Your participation is vital in the democratic process. Again, thank you for your commitment to the future of East Meadow Schools. Let me begin by introducing our moderator for the evening. Robin Bowling is the former Westbury School Board President. She's currently serving her tenth year on the Westbury Board of Education. And she also serves as the President of the Westbury Branch of the NAACP. So, without further ado, let us welcome Robin Bowling.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First of all, I would like to thank you all for being here. It's so important that we commit to being part of the process and not only with your vote, with your voice, and by being committed to being a part of the process and speaking to the candidates and the incumbents. Tonight, we're going to have a very discongestation. We're going to ask some questions, we're going to get some answers, or meet you about candidates, and we're going to be common to one another. Being on the School Board is about relationships. And you start by having a relationship with your community and your constituents. So, tonight, you see our lady's here, I know a lot of you know him, but I want to introduce themselves first. So, Raju, would you go first?
Sure. My full opening statement?
Yes.
My name is Razia Jamin-Aristide. Good evening to everyone. I would like to thank the NAACP and the East Meadow Public Library for hosting this event and a sincere thanking to all of you who sit in the audience. The NAACP identified a need in our community to have another forum and I'm very humbled that you did this for us and all the candidates. I'm a current resident of East Meadow. I've been here for the last nine years along with my husband and two children. I'm a former class mom and current PTA member. Tonight, I'd like to present to you the who, what, where, when, and why of Why I'm Running. Who am I? I am a board-certified internal medicine physician in the clinical leadership and academic setting for over sixteen years. I obtained my master's in medical education in twenty eighteen. I have modified quoting resulted in multimillion-dollar revenue streams and created successful mentorship programs, which I have presented nationally. I currently serve as the President for the American College of Physicians, National District, where I work on health and public policy. In my most recent role as the Chief Medical Officer, I oversaw day-to-day operations, did contract negotiations, worked with multimillion-dollar budgets routinely, and led the company to a net financial profit. To be clear, however, my most defining role is being a mother. Why am I here? In the last two years, my children have experienced four ISM-related events. When my daughter was in the eighth grade, I didn't feel supported or heard by those I approached. I made the difficult decision as a mother to take my daughter out of the district. My son remained in the district, unfortunately experiencing the same thing repeatedly this year alone, sixteen-plus years in a hospital setting. Where is my vision in all of this? My vision is to be part of the change that I am asking to see. Every child, family member, community member should have a seat at the table supporting students with a quality education, which includes their physical, mental, and social and emotional well-being throughout their formative years. The aim is to collaboratively create a partnership that supports the whole student by creating an open dialogue with parents, administrators, teachers, supporting staff, and community members. When can this be done? As soon as you vote for me. Thank you so much.
As everyone can see, we have four seats here at our table. My, Tom, and Luca, Raju, Aileen, and Maria. Everyone was invited to this event. Notices went out, invitations went out, and so we have the two ladies you see with us. So, just letting you know that everyone was invited to participate in this event. And this time, I'm going to read from you, Ellen.
Excuse me, I have to take my glasses off to read. I am an optician. Good evening. Can you hear me? Oh, it's not on. Let's try that again. Good evening. Thank you to the NAACP for hosting this forum for us and the East Meadow Public Library for making the accommodations. As my running mate already stated, you saw a need and you came to the rescue. Because I think this is going to be a much more open conversation and dialogue and we're going to really talk about the things that we don't get to talk about, that we should be talking about. So, without further ado, I'm going to attempt to read this. My commitment to the district and community goes back almost twenty years. First serving as class mom, committee chair on several committees, including lipstick and bingo. I became involved with the American Legion, ten eighty-two. I'm actually not going to do this, I'm going to just read from, talk from my heart because that usually starts me fast. I have been rooted in this community very deeply for twenty-five years. We found East Meadow because, I found it by accident because I do not do directions well, and I actually got lost. And I ended up on North Jerusalem, right by CVS, and drove around for hours and fell in love with this community. I was the person that got out of the car with my two-year-old son, pregnant with my daughter, knocked on the door and said, "Hi, I think I'd like to live here. Can you tell me what's great about it?" And the first woman's door that I knocked on, I'm still friends with. So, coming to East Meadow has afforded me such amazing opportunities. Yes, I've been very, very involved in the school district, as I said, class mom, PTA President, softball coach. I had a little joke where I said, "I didn't realize how much a cheeto could be an incentive for the girls to hit the softball and get to first base." It worked every time. I've done a lot of volunteering. I believe that I have stood up for individuals in our community that haven't had a voice, our senior citizens, our veterans. Todd Weinstein tapped me on the shoulder about four years ago and said, "Hey, they need some help, I think you can help them." "Sure," I said. "Why not?" I said. "I could pull a few strings." Well, I was able to help secure a seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant from Senator Kevin Thomas. He was the only one that would listen. We had several fundraisers. We had the entire hall completely overhauled, new roof, new windows, new siding, because they were going to lose that, the last American Legion Hall in our community, they were going to lose that, and I couldn't let that happen. And it's kind of, I'd like to say, who I am as a person. If I see a need, I can't walk away. I can't. When my children ask me, "Mom, but you've been doing this for so long, why?" I said, "Because I met this woman." This woman came to the Board of Education meeting and she spoke and we had prior knowledge of the situation. I couldn't shake it. I went to work the next day, we received an email, I replied back, we exchanged phone numbers, and our first phone call was an hour and a half long. And I just knew there was something there between us. So, for me, it's, there's no, there's no mistake that we're here tonight, that we're at this forum tonight on this anniversary. I think that this speaks volumes to somebody really looking out for us. I have learned so much from Razia in the last month. Some good, some really insightful things, but some really bad things too. Where when we stand together and a parent will speak to me, but they won't tell me an issue that they're having with their child. Because even though I'm Aileen and I'm nice and I'm welcoming, they cannot relate to me. And I understand that. And that's my commitment. We have a very diverse community and we need diversity in our leadership roles. And that's why I'm here. Because she will make an amazing addition to our Board of Education. Thank you.
As I stated before, a lot of things that we do start with relationships. And by developing that relationship with the parent and listening as a School Board member and inviting her in, that shows the beginning of relationships. And that's what we're all about to do. So, we have our questions here and I'll be reading some of these questions. Ladies, the first question I have is, what are two to three points of five in East Meadow? Aileen, I heard the very beginning and that's awesome, and you're still friends with the ladies. Tell us some of the things about East Meadow.
We have so many amazing programs for our students that have grown over the years. We were just awarded a, an award for our music departments and our arts department. We have two marching bands that march every Columbus Day. They flip-flop between first and second place usually, so it's a nail-biter the day after Columbus Day. You know, who's going to come in first this time, who's going to come in second this time? We have expanded so many opportunities for children to take college courses in our schools. And what that does is it really does help offset the cost of college for students that want to go into higher education. We have two Blue Ribbon Elementary Schools, McBay and Barton Woods, and I think that they do an outstanding job. Our teachers do nurturing our children and getting them ready for the next cycle of their life, which is middle school.
Raju, what brought you to East Meadow?
What brought you to East Meadow? My husband and I were living in Brooklyn, finishing up our rotations. My husband just walked in over there and we were really, you know, very intentional about wanting parking spaces in front of our house. But we said, "All right, guys, we gotta move, we can't do Brooklyn anymore because I have to use the stolen, I gotta push my car, so we're going to move to Long Island." And then we looked around, did some research, and what was really important to us was
And then we looked around, um, did some research, and what was really important to us was, we wanted to be in a district where our kids could walk into anywhere and be comfortable, right? And what that comfort meant for them was not defined by us. It was whatever made them happy and who they were. You know, I want my daughter to be able to, um, wear her hair out if she wants, and walk into a building and just feel good about herself. And we looked for, um, a district that had a diverse population, and we looked for a district that had good outcomes after high school, for kids who graduated high school and had good academics, and that was what was important to us. Our parents are first generation here, um, and they sometimes probably didn't eat in order to give us a meal to do well in school, and academics was very important to them. And that is part of why we, we came to East Meadow.
Great. So I really mentioned Barton Woods. Uh, just a little bit more in-depth about me is, my daughter was a student teacher at Barton Woods.
Oh.
As well as being a lead teacher while she was there, also at Barton Woods. So I do have some roots here as well. Although she's not there now, but I do know Barton Woods. So our next question is, uh, so, it needs to be, that was required, so I wish to address needs and follow the US and New York State for education incentives, raise the bar and lead the world. Why do you see these, why do you see these as needs? So right now, the New York State education is going through some changes. And the most important thing that they're doing is DEI.
Okay.
So ladies, can you tell me, let me just listen out to some of what they think about DEI and why is it important?
Before I start, it sounds like your daughter, as the beginning of the story, they just made some basic questions. DEI, so I've actually done quite a bit of work with DEI on the medical education side. Um, this is something, you know, I'm a physician, I don't go to a medical, I can tell them that it's my fault, right? But the New York State Department of Education has, um, an initiative and a movement that they feel is important that came from somewhere. Um, and I think when you talk about DEI, everyone just assumes it is just race, like, let's not, let's not talk about that, people shying from it. Um, diversity is really the diversity in race, ethnicity, religion, gender identification, disability, there's a whole heap that goes into diversity, right? Um, with equity, I lived that life with my parents when we came here. It's really making, um, room and opportunities for people who did not have them in their prior years, and taking all of that together and making an inclusive environment, right? So inclusivity for all. I shouldn't have to walk into any building, room, meeting, and know how personally different I am and feel a way towards that where I can't perform. To me, that's what DEI is, and, and maybe, just, what makes you feel inclusive, right? My son is ten years old, he's growing up with Eric and Sal and Pepper, right? You are not finding another Sal and Pepper ten-year-old? Um, and is that important to him? And how can I talk him through that? How does he feel included? That's my thought.
Thank you.
Ellen. As a sitting trustee, I know that, um, New York State has mandated that each district adhere to policy and procedure. That is from New York State. In our district, we embrace it in multitude of ways. We have a character education program at our elementary school, and that, I think, allows the conversation to have, to be had at a child's level of accepting, acknowledging that my friend isn't just like me, but we're just, but we're kids, we're the same. Can we do better? From the conversations that we've had, we need to do better. I don't think that the conversation is happening at the appropriate levels. I fear, my fear is that parents are not comfortable coming and having these conversations, and so our teachers, our faculty, our administrators are not really aware. They just all of a sudden see, "Oh, well, you know, this child isn't in school anymore. I wonder if they moved, I wonder what happened." So I definitely think the elementary school is where, or, you know, that's our cinder block, that's where we, our foundation is, that's where we build up children. We need to do a better job in connecting those dots as they continue to go into the higher grades. And I think that the focus really needs to be on the communication and being welcoming. So we talk about diversity, equity, and inclusivity. We're fifty-seven percent diverse, I think. Oh, one minute, okay. Uh, so I think that representation is going to be key in having those parents come and speak to us, being more comfortable speaking to us. Let's at least open the door and welcome everyone in. As we like to say, we need to build a bigger table so that more community members can have a seat at the table.
So you both come from a PTA background. I was a PTA president as well. And in PTA, you always invited all of the parents. And you remember when the kids were in elementary school, everybody came to all of the events, everybody was there, you had to act out. But if you notice, as the kids grew older, the parents started to drop off. And those schools were needing them the most. Because that's when our kids start to change, and that's when we need all parents involved. And Aileen, you mentioned that we are not, we need to be more. And so on this anniversary of Brown versus the Board, and in our, in our little clip, we saw that it was the segregation. It was the segregation. And although the students in the other places that were segregated, the kids were excelling. And so our kids need to excel, and they need to have friendships, again, and going back to the relationships. And when we have those relationships with everybody in our community, that's when our children flourish. A lot of things start at home. And we have to start to have those courageous conversations. I mean, yeah, DEI sounds like a hot topic now, because everybody's saying it, but if we look back at Brown versus the Board, that was a hot topic then.
Right.
So we have some other questions here. Leadership devaluing students' voices. What can we do better? What can we do to make it better for those being harassed and bullied? So, one of those courageous conversations I had to have at one point, and when I went to the principal, I asked for the parent meeting. Because I wanted to meet the parent of the child that was bullying my kid. Let me just, let me just step out of my clothes for a minute. I was that parent that would go to the bus stop. And the bus driver just said to me, "Man, you can't get on a bus." And I was, "Oh, it's on my way right here." Because I was my kid. But also, as a PTA mother, all of them were my kids. So my kid was being bullied, your kid was being bullied, I had a voice, and I wanted to raise my voice. So PTA moms, well, back to the question, what can we do to make it better for those being harassed and bullied? Aileen?
I'm really biting at this one. I shared it, so I'm going to try to talk really fast. I shared a story with Razia that happened, I had a discussion with my son. He understands why I'm here, he understands the motive, he understands, um, what happened to Razia's, uh, two children. When my son was in fifth grade, he was, fifth grade, ten years old, um, he was jumped by his friends. I was, uh, not the PTA president, but I was already, already very involved in Barton Woods, and I got a call from the principal, middle of the workday, and said, "You need to come to my office." That never happened to me before. I got there, my son was there, the child that was the aggressor was there, I was there, the other mom was there. We had a discussion, we talked about responsibility. My son, I'm so proud of him, sat there and said, "I know that even though I didn't start it, I finished it, and I have to take the responsibility." That's my son. The other little boy was crying. We don't have that anymore. I don't know where that fell off. Where is that opportunity to have the parents come and sit with their child and hear what happens? Because I know that when that child went home with his mother, it was not a pleasant conversation. Fast forward, they ended up becoming best friends in sixth grade. That's, we hope, the moral of the story. But had I not been given the opportunity to sit and hear what happens, and hear my son take responsibility, but also the other child take responsibility, this, I don't believe that we would have had a positive outcome. So I'm not sure where the disconnect is, or where the conversation stops, um, having, being had with the, the parents, but we need to bring that back. Certainly, we never, as a board, it's oversight, no, not overstep. So it's not my job to go into a principal's office and say, "This is what you need to do." However, I think that we can look at policy and see where we can make a change and be effective in that regard, in our proper role.
Thank you, Aileen. And speaking also of board members as well, that's where our job is, policies and procedures. That's what the school board's job is. And a lot of times, some school boards take quota, and past practices, past practices are not policies and procedures. And I guarantee you, when you go for a policy book, and your policies are posted on your website, you will see policies that can be updated. Rajah? Someone pronounce your name.
Razia.
Razia.
So one of the reasons I'm actually here is because when my children went through what they went through, I really had to advocate for weeks, multiple conversations, um, to have a conversation with someone at the school, or to have a conversation inclusive of the parents. And what I was told was that, you know, that's not what we do. When it recently happened with my son, I, you know, found myself crying my dry voice to my husband, and, you know, asking why this had to be so difficult. Why do I, as a parent, have to advocate so much just to have a conversation? Whereas I feel the conversation should be, you know, "Mrs. Jamin, we're sorry this happened to your son. What can we do to make this okay for you and your household? What do you need?" And what I needed at that time was to show my son, who went through this for the third time in two months, that I was advocating for him. And then I, I took a moment, you know, because I got a little hot-headed, um, in my emotions, and I took a step back, and I said, "Wait a minute, I was off that day, so I had the time to make all these phone calls, and I was off the next day, so I continued to make those phone calls." So what happens to the parents who don't have that time, who don't feel comfortable doing that, who just accept what they're told and move on? What happens to those parents? I think, in my opinion, what we can do better is make it okay for parents to ask secondary questions, right? This is not the policy. Well, what is? And when can we talk about that policy? And when can we address it? I want us as a community of parents to take responsibility. If my child does something to anyone, I will take care of that behind closed doors in my home, and you can trust that that will not happen again. As a parent, my child knows what is right and wrong, and in the event that he slips because he's a child, I will have that conversation. I want to be involved, and I, I want to bring us back to a place where we can have a conversation with parents. Because I think a lot of times, maybe the parents don't know, or maybe this is how your child is acting towards you, or, you know, let's have a conversation, and that's where those formative stages come in, right? At certain stages in your child's life, if a mom, dad, or caretaker says, you know, "I can't believe you did that, I'm really disappointed, I, you know, that hurt my feelings, and it hurt your friend's feelings," they perceive that very differently than if you're talking to a thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old. There's a way and a technique to really hone in on getting the results.
Ladies, I'm going to go back to our PTA days again, because when I was in PTA, they always said, "Follow the chain of command." Somebody was wrong, you followed the chain of command. So you went to the teacher, and the teacher didn't give you the satisfactory, you went to the principal, and the principal didn't give you satisfactory, you went to the superintendent. But also along the way, you had your PTA there with you. Because remember again, PTA is supposed to be advocates. That's what the purpose of that organization is, to advocate for children. And some reasons I think our PTA leaders forget that, they could quote up any other stuff, but that's, the true meaning of PTA is to be an advocate. And when we have these situations of bullying in our school districts, that's the time where the PTA should be bringing all parents together. And, you know, sometimes you hear the PTA says, "Well, we can't tell you what to do, it's very secretive." Yeah, okay, but your main focus is to advocate for children. So a lot of times, I think, we need to pull those PTA members, those PTA presidents, start to pull their coattails and say, "Look, we need to have a workshop about bullying. This is happening. Uh, it may not affect any of your kids, but it's happening to some children in our district, and we need to talk about it." We have some more questions up there. What is your commitment to the process of hiring practices, practices to reflect cultural awareness and understanding, attracting high-qualified cultural and aware teachers and staff to our district? That's a whole mouthful. So I'm going to see if I can show them. What do you think the district is doing to attract diverse candidates to your district?
I am going to say that I need probably know a little bit more about the hiring process than I do, but I'm going to speak of what I do know. Um, one of the things I believe the district is doing is looking at schools that are graduating in teachers and, you know, going from there, right? That's your, that's your inlet of qualified, highly qualified folks who can teach your students, and that's the same thing we do. We go to medical schools and we hire those doctors, right? Um, I think we should look at, let's look at the school, you know? We had this discussion earlier today, is this a very high-tuition school? Is this a school that is sustainable to a lot of students, to a diverse population of students, to go through the schooling and become that highly qualified teacher? So where are we hiring from, and can we expand that a little bit, understanding that part of the diversity and equity is, you know, something that my family dealt with for a very long time, is the financial instability. And I didn't have an opportunity to go to a particular kind of school, but I went where I liked, and I did well, and I came out as a highly qualified physician, right? Um, so let's look at the pool where we're taking our, our teachers from, and see if we can expand that more into the community where we have more people who are able to get into those schools. Um, I had a discussion with a neighbor when this campaign started, and she was, you know, part of, part of what I'm doing is to start and have a conversation. And I had a conversation with a neighbor who was just very angry at her prior experiences as a sergeant, and was trying to explain to her that I think it's really important when you have students to make sure that the students have that relatability factor to their teachers, right? They need to feel seen in their teachers. And the first thing she thought about was race. And I said, "It's not, it's not just that, right? There's so many ways that I can feel relatable to the person who's teaching me." Um, and I tried to explain that, and, you know, I went home, and then there was this awful, awful thing she said about me being racist and only hiring people of color. And this is me trying to start a conversation, right? Um, and it couldn't be any more further from the truth, and what was hurtful is, why do you assume that getting a diverse population of teachers means that they're not highly qualified, right? means that they're not highly qualified, right? Highly qualified teachers are highly qualified teachers no matter where they came from. We, and I tell this to my medical students every day, nobody wakes up wanting to do the wrong thing. And I have to believe that. And that is what I think we can do better as a district, which is looking at making sure that, that equity portion, you know, and the diversity portion, and we're, we're getting our teachers from a place that we truly feel has that diversity in education. Thank you.
And responsibility in hiring is, we hire the superintendent. We hire, as a board collectively, directors. But that's really as involved as we get in the hiring process. The teachers are hired usually through their individual buildings, so there's a committee that's formed. Usually the principal or vice principal or dean would sit on that committee. Usually a rep from the teachers' union would also participate in that. And there's several steps that, that have to follow before a decision is made. A teacher doesn't necessarily come to the Board of Education. However, East Meadow participated in an event, I believe it was in Hicksville, and it was a, it was a diversity opportunity to kind of network as a teacher. It was misconstrued by a lot of members of the community exactly for the reason that Raviya said. East Meadow is not going out and searching for individuals of any particular color, background, gender. However, we do want to open the pool. Why would we narrow the pool? We want the best teachers. We have the best teachers. And whether that includes a denomination, a race, a, a, male or female, it doesn't, it shouldn't matter. As Rajah has said, a highly educated teacher is what we want. And the individual attributes of that person shouldn't matter. So as far as that, that's really all I can bring as a, as a sitting trustee. I want the best for our students. We have a highly achieving district. And that is not by mistake, that is by design. Because we have teachers that care, that go the extra mile time and time and time again. They did it for my children and both of my children are very successful. Thank you.
Thank you. And speaking to that, I recently was at the school board convention and Ruby Bridges was our guest speaker. And it was, it was awesome. We were in New Orleans and Ruby Bridges spoke. And one of the things she said that has stuck with me since that very day is she knew that the people outside were there because they didn't want her to be there. But that teacher, who looked like those people outside, were not. She was there to love her, to teach her, and to care for her. She saw the difference at six years old. And those people outside that did not want her to go to that school, but that teacher that was in the building that looked like those people, she was not like those people. So it takes a special kind of person, a teacher, to be able to show that compassion and understanding for children. So, our next question. How will we engage parents to address the specialties of children with different ability, special education, and gifted ability? Sometimes we can get that special ability means gifted because sometimes our children may act out because they're bored. What would you say, Rajah?
I, I was a long-term in this campaign and more than ever I realize that how we do this is just talk about it. We have conversations. And what are your needs? And I, you know, I think for me as a parent, I would have never thought to go to the Board of Education or thought to say anything that I need anywhere else except where I needed it in my home. And I think engaging parents in helping them understand the context of what we are allowed to do, the budget that we have to do it, and then looking at the needs that you have for your child, but telling us what those needs are both inside of the school and at home. When my child has a tough night, loses a game as a nightmare, I email my teacher. Hey, listen, you know, my son had a rough night. Just FYI, let me know. Because, you know, if you think about the moments in time where you're worried of your child, these teachers have 30 of them during the entire day, right? And so giving them that information. But for parents with, with children who have additional needs, special needs, and gifted children, what resources do you need reaching out to them? You know, I have parents who chat to me all the time because of my medical background, asking questions. And I, I say, "What about those 7200 parents in this grade? Like, who are they reaching out to? Do they know where to go and what to do?" And most importantly, close move communication, okay? Not saying, "We have $90 million in budget this year for your needs!" exclamation point, right? This is what we have. This is what we're going to do with it. What, what is your feedback? I went to Board of Education meetings and there were three people there. And going back to the PTA, you know, I take responsibility as a parent. I had my child for 18 summers. 18 Christmases, 18 New Years, 18, okay? I need to take ownership for getting more involved. And I, as a parent, need to find those avenues through which I can communicate my needs. It starts with communication.
In our district, we have something in the elementary school called metamorphosis. I think that's correct. Neither Anthony or Krista was in that. Oh, Quest, I'm sorry, it was Quest. But that's okay because they're, they're terrific kids anyway. In high school, we have advanced placement courses. When Anthony went, they were called scale also, so each child took a different path. Krista wanted to be challenged more. She was just, she was that student. Anthony wanted to be challenged, but he, he just took a different path. So I think as far as opportunities, you know, we, I think we have some good roots, but we can certainly expand on them and we should be. We should be challenging our students all the time because an engaged student is a successful student. Special education is been a topic at our Board of Education meetings quite frequently lately. What we, information we found out recently was that resource room was not being utilized any longer. And my son was in resource room. And I thank God every single day that he had that opportunity because he was struggling reading. There were some, there were some medical issues that he was going through. He had trouble learning to speak. My daughter had a hearing issue also. So the resource room has kind of resurrected and so we're looking at what we can do to expand that. But there's also another factor in addressing the needs of our students. Our students with special education needs are highly achieving students. It's the students that are struggling socially and emotionally because of the world that we live in. Social media has put so much pressure on our students, on our children. And it is an absolute necessity that we have those resources available for all those students. Too many times we hear of a TikTok video, an Instagram video, a young girl took her life live, and we're not affected by that. There's something wrong. There's something wrong with that. So as much as we need to make sure that we're addressing all of the issues that we have academically, we need to make sure that we're taking care of our children mentally, emotionally. Perfect. Thank you.
You opened up a door. There's not a question there. Just I'll take a little bit right here. You talked about social emotional learning and you talked about social media. Now there was a time in our schools where cell phones have become an issue. What do you think should happen here in the course of today with cell phones? And I understand that as parents, we want to be able to reach out to them. I get that. But I also understand, because I sit on the school board, where we are able to reach every parent, every student through a text message, through an email. So you don't have to have 24/7 access to your child while they're in school for those six to seven hours. What do you guys think would be a solution to cell phones and a smartphone?
I'll go first. So first of all, for the parents who feel like they need to know where their children are, where their after-school activities, going straight from school, teaching them how to turn that location on so that they know where their child is, but putting that phone away. A lot of data in young men and women, 17, 18, 19 years old and above, shows that frequent use of screens, the lights and the interaction have actually made, you know, really, get a lot of things going in your brain even when you're just sitting there. And it contributes to concerns with learning, attention deficits, visual changes, anxiety later on in life. And when I talk to parents about this, they, they may not have known, right? And so doing the teaching and the education on appropriate screen time, putting those phones away during school, looking at those phones and then going into a classroom, your brain is working in a very different way than if you were not looking at that cell phone five minutes before class. So if now our children's attention, if those things are put away for the duration of their learning, that expectation has to come from us as parents. If those are given to their child, it has to be put away. That's my, that's how I feel, but there's a lot of data that supports not having that. In fact, actually, when someone has a concussion, the advice is not to look at the screen for a certain amount of hours because the damage that happens to your brain then accentuates within those hours. All information that we should provide in some capacity to parents, they can take that information and do what they think is appropriate with that.
Thank you.
That is not a basic question on, for many different reasons. First and foremost, I was a single mom and my children went to Scope, the after-school program, when they were in elementary school. And I got my son, I think it was called the Cricket. It was literally, you press a button and it would only dial one number. And I would say to him, "Anthony, you just keep this because if anything happens to you and Krista, you can get me." Well, my son in fourth grade said, "No! It's, it's against the rules. I can't do it, Mom." And I say, "No, no, I said it's okay. You can do it." No, no, I put this kid through so much anxiety, ended up saying, "It's not worth it. I have to rely on Scope." This is going to be an unpopular answer. The cell phones are here to stay. We're not getting rid of them. But I see a couple of different paths. For the child that maybe has a medical condition, that needs it, that's a reason to have it. There are also safety protocols that the district utilizes in, for the upperclassmen. If they are away, if they're at Dunkin' Donuts, if they're at Starbucks, if they're doing whatever, and an event happens, they will get an alert to say, "Stay away." So it does, it isn't, it's, it's unfortunately, it's necessary. What I also see as a path is bringing the parents into the conversation and having the data provided by the professionals. Letting the parents know, "Listen, we're, we can't, we can't take your child's phone away. It's their property and they may need it. A child may need it for their own anxiety. They're having a bad day. Hi, Mom, just want to, you know, talk to you. I'm having a bad day. Okay, I love you. We're having hot dogs tonight, your favorite, something." So I think it's, it's, it's an evil necessity that we have. But I think the way to find a resolution, and I can't give you one tonight, is having the conversations with the parents. This would probably be a really good opportunity for PTA to have an access workshop and involve the parents and have them understand, "You need to have the conversation with your son. You need to have the conversation with your daughter and say, 'Listen, I'm trusting you. I'm trusting you that you're going to do the right thing in school because you're there to learn.'" And I think that if we give our children the opportunity to rise to the occasion, they will.
Thank you. So we talked about special education. And I know that special education can be a big part of the budget. What do you think about the rules for the, for the school year? What is the most important initiative you will pursue that is included in the budget? So I don't know if you ladies have had the opportunity to look at the budget, but before I ask that question, Christine?
Is there a capability for folks to ask questions?
Yeah. Okay, so just because I don't want anybody to say that we didn't include the other ladies, is there any questions from Nicole or Maria? Have they made any comments?
Yeah, sure. I do have to indicate for the people who might be questioning that, but we have my question.
Okay, and, and my question is on Zoom, are there any questions in the chat? But Robin, there were a couple of questions that were emailed to us, which I shared with you.
Yes, they're there myself.
Okay.
So ladies, about the budget. So I'll go back to this question about budget. What is the most important initiative you, oh. What is the most important initiative you pursue that is included in the budget?
So we've identified that special education is going to be a very big conversation that we have. We are the district that brought our children back into the district.
So they can learn alongside their friends, their neighbors.
That's really important for child development and I am extremely proud of that initiative that we were able to do. There are more children that need special education resources. However, as I stated before, resource room seemed not to be a, a resource that we were utilizing. And so I think once we do a thorough evaluation of our, of our children with special needs and we can determine that they would strive in the least restrictive environment and go and u, and utilize the resource room, we do two things. We open up a spot for another student that may need these services more. We also are not hiring more teachers. And we love teachers. We love our teachers. But that is the area that we really need to focus on. And transportation, I have to add that. Post-COVID, many of the bus companies went bankrupt simply because they were out of work for so long. It's become a monopoly and we just can't compete. We cannot get the numbers down. We have to, we have to use the companies that are available to us. We do partner with BOSI's in, in bidding and hoping to get the cost down. But we need to provide transportation for our students. It's as simple as that. So unfortunately, they have a stronghold on us and until another company wants to go into the bus business, And until another company wants to go into the bus business, we would definitely entertain a bid.
Thank you. So, I'm going to speak a little bit from my experience in healthcare. Because look at the budget, I don't have the experience of the school budget, so I'll speak in my school. This year and the following year, the New York State, New York State budget has allocated about $237 billion for healthcare. Nineteen million of those dollars additional have been allocated to, to children and mental health concerns, right? In my practice, I see eighteen and above, and if I see twenty-five patients, twenty-three of them are male with anxiety. I would like to see resources for parents and children be part of that allocation. If, if I had the dollars to put towards it, I think post-pandemic between PTSD and being schooled at home and not really understanding what's happening in the world, we're seeing a lot of children, young adults with anxiety, depression. And potentially, you know, I am fortunate to be able to have those sessions with my parents, with my children. And I can, I can say from how I grew up, that not every parent has that opportunity. New tools, new toolbox. So, I would love to see what we can do with resources both for children and families.
Thank you. I think that is a great idea coming out of the pandemic and a lot of parents as well as students.
Yeah.
We need to give ourselves some grace and we need to give our children some grace. And I think if we did have resources within the school district to have maybe extra counselors or have extra different sessions for the students, but again, I'm going to go back to our PTA because I think we forget what our purpose is to advocate. And we have to do more. We have to do more as parent leaders. Let me say that again. We have to do more as parent leaders. So, we have to get involved. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being involved by being here tonight. But if you're a part of the PTA, please let's raise some of these questions because we're advocates. We're our own best advocates. Do you think I've collected some of the questions?
This question says, there is a lot of controversy in our community about what the trustee of the board can, can and cannot do. This includes the assumption that trustees bring their political views to the table. Can you please explain the legal role of the trustee and the board?
Aileen is the, I'll, I'll start, please. I'll start. Yes, there, there's been quite a bit of chatter regarding political affiliation, political opinions, political directives, political initiatives. Politics stops at the door. There are no politics in educating our students. I don't know how many times I have to say it, but I'll keep saying it because apparently it needs to be heard. The role and responsibility of a school board trustee is policy and procedure. Each year, we have a retreat, Board of Education Retreat. And that's where we form our mission statement. And I actually brought it with me, so I'm so glad somebody asked this question. So, we form a mission statement and we build policies and procedures kind of around that. It's on our website, if anybody wants to look at, look for it. So, we are to acquire the knowledge and skills needed to lead a productive, responsible and culturally enriched life in the 21st century. Develop attitudes that reflect empathy and caring for others and respect the differences and diversity in our society. Understand our cultural heritage and the need to participate in the community as an informed and involved citizen. Work cooperatively in a group while becoming an independent learner and productive thinker. Achieve physical and emotional wellbeing. Understand the need to appreciate the earth and protect the environment. Now, when we come up with this mission statement, all Board of Education trustees are together. And we all agree upon this. So, this isn't just Aileen Appolitano, although I agree with every single word there. Every board member agrees on our mission statements. Hope I've answered the question.
I'd like to just piggyback on what she said. So, I don't have that information. But one thing that I can tell you is that going to Aileen and going to the board, I come up with 5,000 ideas and Aileen sits down very patiently and says, no, no, that's not our responsibility. But here's what we can do to get a little bit more well-versed about it. When I went through what I did with my children, I, the only reason I needed to go to the Board of Education was because I had great mentors and contacts who said, why don't you go to the Board of Education? And I, I took, you know, I, I took that and I went to Aileen and I said, I think people just need to understand what you guys do and that you're there. And there is a hierarchy of, you know, if you're not satisfied with what you hear from the school, then go to Board of Education. And certain things may not be in their, in their pretty, but they will certainly direct you in where you need to go. And we supported in that. And I think one of the things that she so graciously done with me is come out into the community with me and meet people and businesses and parents and we sit at card halls, I used to even talk to parents. And people are so appreciative of that, just to understand that, hey, there's a Board of Education. This is what we look like and let's talk about what we can and can't do. And I think that's, yes, there are those mission statements, but Aileen and those on the Board of Education have spoken to have been so open to explaining, you know, what they do, how they do it. And if they don't do it, then here's how we get to it.
Thank you. That's very important.
I'm going to go back to, we are there for our students. And we're there for the whole student. We're not just there for this student or this student because they meet the criteria of what one individual feels identifies as a student. My daughter had a very, very hard time. And I'm so good about this. She was fifteen. Whole world really fell apart. She was really trying very hard to find her own identity. And I think we need to rely and lean into our educators because they're spending a lot of time with our children. And they can see things that we don't always see. When your daughter comes home, when your son comes home, they're tired, they just want to go to bed. Okay, once, twice. But when it's consistent, the problem is already rolling down the hill. My daughter had a music teacher and I'm going to name him, Christopher Hale. And I don't think he knew intimately what was going on with my daughter. But he knew how to reach her through music. And that was his grab to her. I've got you. I don't know what you're struggling with, but I've got you. And they, they used to call each other, she would call him Father from another mother and just, they just had all these little fun little things. And I will say, that was so pivotal in my daughter healing. So, we have to look at each child individually and whatever that child is, as Razi said, we have to respect that child. We have to give them a platform to feel strong enough that they can voice whatever it is that they're holding inside because we know if they don't get it out, bad things happen. So, I hope I answered the question in the direction that I wanted it to go, which is students first.
Yes.
Students first.
That's the most important.
She's been coming to the Board of Education meeting. She's been coming.
We know each other now because we've both been retired.
Yes.
She was a reading teacher, right?
Oh, reading teacher.
She's funny because it's actually not a question. And I was like, who's that question start? Who, what, where, and she has this statement, took actually three statements. I was a teacher in East Meadow for over thirty years, resident in East Meadow for over fifty years. Times have changed. Greater need is for discussion with parents and teachers and students about social emotional needs.
Yeah.
We just basically said that. And she feels that cell phones should not be allowed in classrooms. They should be kept in lockers or put away while they're learning. And she says that heighten awareness of bullying and respectful responses by the district. Perhaps more discussion for teachers to help them be more knowledgeable and in supporting. And that is one of the things that we're doing with New York State is to try and get a mechanism for the Dignity for All Students Act to be able to have that type of training for our teachers, to be able to have a sense of belonging. And I hope we've been working on with the WACP New York State Conference. And we hope that some of you will join with us to be able to have those conversations because we, we all need to do this together. Have you got a question? Nope.
With that being said, I have one more question. Mine's just going to be a little long. They will email to me. It says, at board meetings and on social media, many people in East Meadow and around the country make the claim that teachers should stop teaching, that educators should limit their interaction with students only to their specific content area and nothing else. It's, do educators have any role to play with students outside of the subject they teach? Please give the specific reasons or examples in your answers. Before you answer, you guys have both stated about teacher interaction. Your example you just gave. Teachers are our first line of defense outside of the parents. A lot of things start at home. And then your kids go to school for six to seven hours and they interact with the teacher. So, this is really, I would say, an opinion question.
You know, teachers are, they're educators and they are for a particular role in our child's lives. They spend eight hours of every day, Monday to Friday, with my child. And I would be very naive to think that I know everything about my child. I think teachers have such a great intuition about how that student's learning, where they are in their life, if something's not right, they may not always know what it is. And I'm going to actually call on Mrs. Waters because I went in a household that was very, very, very strict on academics. I mean, unbelievably strict. And I found myself as a parent doing the same thing with my daughter. And in the first grade, you know, I remember talking to Mrs. Waters and she said, you know, Eliza is drawing these pictures, and we say, she's drawing a picture. I think you need to think about her creative side of her brain and not just her math side inside. And Mrs. Waters, that, I mean, opened up so much for us as a unit in, in raising Eliza. I mean, she, I, I came here expecting nineties and a hundred and she said, let her, let her explore that creative side. I am the mother that I am today to Eliza because I got that deep up from you. And the same thing with my son. You know, my, the teachers let me know, like, you know, Eliza's a little bit ahead of the game. We need to do, we need to do better at home and challenge her academically.
And she's still at the 99th.
She's still at her grade base and she's just so creative. And I don't think teachers are suffering the role of just teaching. I don't think that's right. And they have so much wisdom to give us as parents. Everything is so hard, guys. There is no manual. And I would take any help I can get from anyone who comes in interaction with my child. Thank you.
That was a very involved question and I think we can go a couple of different ways with that. I will reiterate the relationship that my daughter had with Christopher Hale and his ability to see something that I didn't see first. I think what perhaps that the person that brought the question might be leaning towards is having more open communication with our educators, with our teachers. Maybe having more fluid conversation, as Razi said earlier, you know, listen, my son didn't have a good night. There's a situation in the family, there was a death in the family, my, I lost my job, something. Because it gives the teachers a little bit more of an insight so that they're not making a judgment call on why Anthony didn't have his Italian homework done. Well, the night before, maybe there was a situation at home and it was disruptive. So, I think that having a more open conversation with our teachers, it helps us both. It helps us as parents fill in the blanks for the question marks that are above the teacher's head. Hmm, this is not usually how I see Anthony or Krista. Well, now, let's give them a little bit of insight. But also to get some feedback. Hey, I just want to let you know, Anthony was very sad today. And that actually did happen. It was second grade. He had a very, 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 sorry, third grade. And his third grade teacher called me every morning and said, he's crying, what can I do for him? She knew the inside, she knew what was happening, she knew the dynamics of family life at that time. And she was there in such a supportive role. She was his third grade teacher and he did phenomenal. But she was there to give him a hug when I couldn't and he desperately needed it. So, we have the opportunities for our teachers to be amazing educators. And we know that they are. But we have the awesome opportunity for them to be human and show humanity and tenderness and compassion to maybe that student that needs it or maybe the student that doesn't need it. Maybe the applause of, you know what, you're doing outstanding. I just want to let you know, I saw that. I recognize that. So, I think that our teachers bring so much more than just teaching to our children.
Thank you.
Perfect. Finally, look at that.
We must always recognize our teachers and what they pour into our children because teachers plus parents equals successful students.
That's right.
I really believe that. We have one last question.
Oh, boy.
One last one. How would you handle decisions that are unpopular with the public but educationally necessary?
You picked that up so fast.
Because I do this every day in medicine. I have a conversation. I explain the data. I legitimize the feelings that everyone will have. And I bring the data, right? There's, not everyone is going to be happy every single time, but there is always a need that, you know, we talk about risk versus benefit in healthcare, right? So, there is a risk and there's a benefit. And if there's a benefit at the end of the day, and a need, and I can show you the numbers and the stats and the articles, and this is how we're going to do this. But I do deeply understand how I feel. That is it.
You didn't talk long enough. Didn't need to. I'm trying to think of a time when we made a decision that was unpopular with the community. I think it's actually been the opposite. When parents came to us for TURF, we had forums, we had open conversations. It wasn't us sitting at a dais. We actually had tables and we would go to the tables and interact with the parents. We also had students there. And we gave the, the students an opportunity to have an opinion. They're the ones that were getting injured on the field, they're the ones that were utilized in the field. Parents just want to pretty field, they have them now. However, I'm sure there's going to come a time when there's going to be a conversation, whether it's budgetary, whether it's any mandate. We have to adhere to New York State education law. That's first and foremost. You know, the second we say, oh, but you know what, we're going to, we're not going to do that. Well, then we lose our funding. Well, then we lose our funding. And we are a very, very, very fortunate district. Received an additional $4 million that we weren't expecting. That is going to help us. But we need to be able to communicate and have the hard conversations. And sometimes that may be sitting with the parents and having them say, I'm not happy with you. And I don't like the fact that you're doing that. But at least giving them an opportunity to voice it. At the end of the day, we may not be able to change whatever it is that that community member is not happy about. But we certainly can give them a platform that they feel that they're being heard and that they feel like, oh, well, they just shut the door. I don't matter. You matter. Even if we don't agree, you matter. And we're going to have that conversation and we will have it respectfully.
Excellent. The leads on the app of the NWCPT. We thank you for being here with us. We thank you for taking the time out and thank you worthy enough to come here and sit with us. As for our other two ladies, Erica and O'Shannon, we're proud of this courageous conversation. We plan on doing this again and we hope that you will join us again. To you, my dear.